I'll call to order the work session for Wednesday, March 5th, 2014. The first item on the agenda is ordinance number 1772, an ordinance of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland, amending Chapter 8 of the city code to create a new Article 6 entitled, "Donation Bins for Profit and Nonprofit Organizations." Ms. Mills?
Mr. President, on February the 11th, we had submitted to the council members a redraft of ordinance number 1772, the donation bins. We had taken into consideration comments brought to us by the former Washington Corridor Chamber of Commerce, and the ordinance now addresses the bins provided by for-profit and also nonprofit companies. The mayor had concerns for fire and vandalism issues, so the new ordinance, new draft, does not allow wood bins or bins made with wood products, and bins may be no higher than eight feet. Up to four bins may be placed on one property. Donation bins cannot be placed in residential zones except on property owned by a religious or nonprofit entity. One application may contain up to three bins; however, the permit fee will be per bin. Those are the significant changes of what was -- from what was originally presented.
Mayor, if there's anything you want to --
Sorry, we did get some information from Planet Hollywood. Tell me where I'm at.
Let's go.
No, you're my Planet Aid. They're passing that out. I'm sorry, I forgot. I read this, looked at it, and I forgot all about forwarding it over to you all. So, Kristi, you have yours if you want to just maybe go over theirs real quick.
Okay. Regarding Section 8.72, the permit fee. Planet Aid comments, "As with any business entity, nonprofit or otherwise, Planet Aid seeks certainty with regards to its cost of operation. We understand the need for leniency in setting permit fees, especially when attempting to discourage bad actors in the market. On the other hand, Planet Aid recycles clothing in multiple towns, cities, and counties with a number of different associated operating expenses. Having a floating fee in each jurisdiction is certain to become entirely too cumbersome." Planet Aid suggests setting a fee in the ordinance with a mechanism to increase fees based on a specified index, the rate of inflation, for example. I think my guess is, and it's a guess, Planet Aid is not familiar with the process the city has for setting permit fees. We do not set them by ordinance. They are set at the approval of the mayor. They are reviewed annually with the budget. If the department head recommends fees to be changed.
And as I've said all along, this is not -- the permitting fee is not about making money. This is, quite frankly, it's not why we do the permit fees. It's more of to pay for the process and to make sure that the information that we need has gotten properly. But I don't, you know, I don't see this thing going, you know, way overboard when we talk about fees on that.
Okay. Section 8.73, limitation on permits. Their comments are, "The language included in this provision is somewhat confusing and perhaps unnecessary. It seems as though the provision is simply stating that either for-profits or nonprofits may apply for a permit. If the IRS reference is retained, for-profit organizations should be held to an equally high standard using the following language, quote, 'for-profit entities or organizations that are in good standing with the state of Maryland,' end quote. Secondly, the section of the provision that reads, quote, 'or other appropriate section of the Internal Revenue Code,' end quote, is unspecific and may lead to confusion. If Laurel intends for religious organizations and nonprofit schools to be covered by this provision, we suggest the following change, quote, letter C. in print, 'religious, educational, charitable, and other entities or organizations that provide a certificate of good standing per and not older than three months,' end print, and a 501(c)(3) determination letter from the Internal Revenue Services and for-profit entities or organizations that provide a certificate of good standing per and not older than three months,' end print, are eligible to apply for a permit." Okay. Section 8.74, application requirements. A subsection 9, "For profit and nonprofit entities or organizations that operate donation bins can and frequently do provide outdated or presently inaccurate certificates of good standing. With this in mind, please insert 'not older than three months' after the state of Maryland." And the last comment for Section 8.84, limitation on permits. Section A, "Generally speaking, liability insurance covers an entity and not an individual donation bin, as that would require a highly specialized insurer. For example, Planet Aid carries a $2 million liability insurance policy with a $5 million umbrella to cover all of Planet Aid's possible liabilities, including its 20,000 donation bins across the country. Hence, the language of this provision should be revised to reflect a potential permit holder's operations being covered," stating, quote, "Permit holders must provide proof of liability insurance of $1 million or more by including a certificate of liability insurance when applying for a permit to place a donation bin in the city," end quote. Final paragraph, "With these minor changes, we believe ordinance number 1772 will achieve the aims of both the city of Laurel and those operating bins in the city. This would not have been possible without your guidance. I am generally excited about our continuing relationship with Laurel. Again, thank you so much. Best regards, Rex Sarai, Regional Manager."
Thank you, Kristi. Mayor?
Yeah, I just, I apologize. So, we just got to you. As I said, you know, I think we're working this. We'd like to get some feedback from you all as well. I don't think there's a rush. They're out there. There's, you know, in some cases, there are some that are unsightly, but I think, you know, get council feedback, you know, let you all have the opportunity to talk to the public. I know there's others, you know, the chamber's been interested in following what we're doing as well as the others. So, that's where I'm at.
Okay.
But this is our, like I said, this is our second stab adding what we heard and other things. Thank you.
Just one quick question, Mayor. With these recommendations that were just handed.
Again, we give you all time to read those, come back, you know, let us know. I mean, I think there's one or two that we, you know, I'm not -- I don't agree on their first statement, which you heard Kristi talk about on how we set. You know, there's a couple of things I could live with in there, a couple of things I might have some questions on, but I think, you know, it's important to get you all's feedback. If we want to do it, let's do it right and get a good piece of legislation.
I agree with you there.
I do want to point out, there was a couple of things, and I'm sorry because I was late as well. We talked about how many pieces, how much on each piece of property. Did you highlight the -- okay.
Yes, we did. Over what was the changes.
And also HDC area, those types of things. So, that's where we really need to make sure we're heading in the right direction. That's the stuff you all are looking for, unless Jack or has anything you want to highlight or Kristi on this. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. I'll go around the table and ask for comments, starting with Councilman Les.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to take a look at this since it's not on our agenda for our next meeting. I assume you're going to hold it?
Yes.
If we can comment. Let me just make a couple of observations. Let me, I haven't digested it. The only one that caught up my eye was this thing about liability insurance. Okay? Someday, somebody's going to push some kid in one of these things, and they're going to die inside this thing. It isn't going to be a million or two million or three million. Somebody's going to sue for a lot of money. That's why it's important that we have the right liability insurance, because, like you say, they got 20,000 of them around the country. All you got to have is two instances. Here's the other issue. They got them parked right on the road up in Howard County, within 20 feet of the road. Somebody's going to run a car off the road, going to lose control, and run into one of these steel things, and somebody's going to get killed.
Before you go, I just want to do a follow. I want to ask John something. On the liability, and I understand we get trapped in all this, but if the property owner, which is one of the things that we added, that the property owner, they need a letter from the property owner, doesn't the liability stay with the property owner? Or since we're permitting them, does it, do we get some of that as well?
It stays with the property owner, and you're looking for a certificate of insurance from them. I think they would be the primary.
The property owner. Can you maybe look into that just to make sure? Mike bring up a good point again.
Yeah.
I've actually gone around and taken a look at many of them. There's some that are open, a couple of them that are open. There's others that are pretty well, I mean, it's tough to even get stuff in them sometimes, but because of the way they open and things drop down and --
What you're doing, as I understand, I mean, I just looked at it.
Right.
You're regulating placing of these types of bins on private property, and you're permitting it.
Yes.
I think the primary insurance is going to lie with them, off the top of my head.
With who?
With the property owner.
The property owner. So, they've got to have liability insurance.
I would think that you'd be requiring insurance from them.
Well, I guess my point would be, the property owner may say, "I want 1,000, or I want 100,000, or I want 6 million." I mean, that sticks with the property. That's really something that we wouldn't want to dictate, would it be?
I would think so. So, this company is getting the permission of private property owners.
Yeah, under our, under our ordinance, or what we're proposing, you know, Craig Mo goes in and says, "I want to do Mo's donation bins. I want to put it on store A parking lot." What we try to do is a little, be a little bit more flexible so that they can tell them where they're talking about putting it, and we can actually go out and look to say, "Okay, well, now you're taking three or four parking spaces," or, you know, "You're putting it on a hill or where a car --" There's a little bit more freedom, I think, in working with the property owner and the group that you're dealing with.
This group's coming to the property owner and says, "We want to --"
Well, one of the things we require before it even gets that far, they need to have the letter from the property owner, or they use a language of --
Their agent, their host.
Agent of the property.
Site host.
And basically, what we're saying is, in order to permit these things, we're going to require a certain amount of insurance.
Well, they're recommending, you all recommended 2 million, right?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah.
But what I'm saying is, is that it would seem to me that it would then be incumbent on the property owner to say to this company who's placing the bins, "You're going to have to make us an additional insured, since we're the property owner, you're going to have to make us an additional insured on your insurance policy."
Yeah, see, and we were trying to stay away from all of that, too.
That's kind of how it works.
That's the property owner who would require that, not us.
Not us. No, the property owner would require that of the company placing the bins.
I got you.
That's how that would work.
But what if they, property owner said they didn't --
So, if somebody turns around and sues the property owner because something happens with the bins, they're an additional insured on their policy.
Okay, I got you. Okay. Planet Aid, right? Yeah, okay. No, I'm the gentleman by, I couldn't remember name, but, okay.
Let me just raise one other issue that's, I mean, some of these people, some of these groups pay to place the bin on property. That's the other issue. That creates some kind of a lease arrangement, correct?
These are licensing agreement, probably. It's probably more of a licensing agreement that's revocable at any time rather than a lease, I would guess. I don't know how, what arrangements they do. That's what I would --
But again, that's between the property owner and the organization.
Yes, that's between those two.
Well, that, but I think that impacts requirements for insurance, though. Once you've leased a piece of, you've created something, I don't know what used, what they called it in my general law course.
It's probably a license. A license is something that has no specific term, it's revocable at any time.
Right.
I don't know. Maybe they would enter into leases, is what I found out.
Yeah, okay. Mike wants to ask him, he is here.
No, 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 because I'm going to go over this, and I'm going to, I'll send the, I'll send you, Mayor, I'll send something to the council on your side.
John, can you look into that a little bit further for us?
Yeah, sure. I'm not sure how they work, but that's how I would guess.
He may be able to help behind us as well.
That's how I would guess they work.
Okay.
And here's the other issue, dealing with the insurance. When I looked last time, this one company had 18 different operating corporations around the United States. They had two in Maryland. So, the question is, how does that impact their insurance liability? But again, I'm not going to ask, I'm not going to answer the question, I'm just throwing it out. Remember, I brought it up last time? Okay? I mean, I don't know, maybe all these companies, all these nonprofits operate like that from state to state. But in this one case, because they were the ones that were in front of us, I went and looked, and at that time, there was 18 different corporations involved here, two in Maryland.
And to address Mr. Les's other comments, Section 8-77, location restrictions, provides that the city shall determine the actual number and placement of donation bins based on the size of the property, the zone, actual land use, and safe access to the donation bin, and the city would not be approving, the example you gave in Howard County.
Right.
We would not approve a bin whose access was a right-of-way.
Well, I'm not so sure that it's right-of-way. It's probably right off the right-of-way, but it was off close to the road. Okay, that, thank you, Mr. President.
We have concerns about the taking up parking spaces and that type of thing.
Yeah. I'll send my comments, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Les. Councilwoman McCrory?
My question was more practical and the safety concern, too, not as far as the insurance issues, because I think that goes on between the agency agreements, but wheel locks on these dumpsters and donation bins. My concern, again, was kids or somebody hitting one of these, and it becomes airborne. And I didn't know if we had something in the code already as far as safety on wheel locks or making them stationary, because I know with dumpsters in the past, if they aren't wooden, when you get into the metal, as far as what they're made of, then you get into an area such as that, not even becoming airborne, them being tipped over on somebody. But then again, you get into premise liability, so it would be insurance. As far as what we just received, yeah, I'll just send comments on something like that.
My question was the same, as about the wheel locks and the safety and about the insurance, so I'll send comments, too.
Okay. So, council, then the impression is that we will review the information that we were given tonight, provide comments, questions to Ms. Rao, forward then to the administration, and we'll hold this until such time as we're ready to move forward with it.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Agenda item 2 is ordinance, amending the operating budget of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland for fiscal year 2014. Good evening, Ms. Ayler.
Good evening. This is our third amendment to the FY 14 operating budget. At this time, we're proposing to reduce permit revenue based on information from the developers, that those permits will not be made during this fiscal year. I'm able to offset that reduction by an increase in police fines, the police fines section, which is specifically red light cameras. That revenue is currently, has exceeded the budget, so we're able to take that 295 and offset the permit fees, as well as on page 2, $85,000 for miscellaneous refunds and rebates that we received, for which we had not previously budgeted. I should add that included in the $85,000 was a $55,000 refund on our workers' comp premium for our experience, as well as when they did the audit, they compare salary actuals to their, they make projections when they do their audit each year of us. The other 30,000 of that was a refund from the red light ticket vendor for payments that we had made previously. So, that's a net change of zero. The budget stays at $28,327,300. Moving on to the expenditure side, there's a reduction in the traffic engineering of $10,000, and this is proposed to be transferred to the CIP to go along with the city's share, as the city's share for the bikeway extension engineering, which all relates to ordinance 797 for the CIP. So, again, no overall change, just transfers of funding and recognizing actual revenues.
Okay. Council, comments, questions? Councilwoman Nicholas?
I don't have any questions.
Councilwoman McCrory?
No problem.
Councilman Les?
No problem. Let me just ask an informational item. Does this, what we have here now represent the police grants we get from the state?
Does it recognize them?
Yeah, I mean, I read something in the budget in the state. Are they going to fully fund that? Is there going to be a change in the grants?
That would be in the budget.
No, that's 15.
Huh?
Twenty fifteen.
Okay, so there's no change this year. And ditto on the highway user.
We've not been made aware of any change that was --
Okay, I just want to make sure. Looking for every nickel we can scrounge, huh?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Les. So, council, we're in agreement to move forward with this and introduce it on Monday night. Thank you. Agenda item 3 is ordinance number 1797, an ordinance to amend certain project budgets in the FY 2014 through FY 2019 capital improvement program. Ms. Aylers?
Again, this corresponds with 1796, just recognizing the state grant that Mr. McCullough's department was able to obtain for engineering, the bikeway path on Van Duzen Road from Olive Branchway to Con-T Road, and picks up, recognizes the $10,000 coming back over from the operating budget for a $50,000 engineering project.
Okay. Comments, questions? Councilman Les? Councilwoman McCrory?
Good to go.
And Councilwoman Nicholas, okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Ayler.
Thank you.
We, yeah. Let me just kind of get back to my agenda. We have, in addition to our agenda, recommended election amendments.
Well, she's doing that. Could we also, before we start, we had asked if anybody has anything further on Boys and Girls Club Task Force? Any other comments?
Any other comments, council?
Questions? We're going to start putting stuff to paper on the issue.
Very good. Okay. Anything?
Okay.
Nothing? Okay. The recommended election amendments, who's taking the lead on this?
I'll take that.
Kim?
Mr. President.
Before you, you have a draft memo dated January 22nd. Marty Fleming, our deputy city administrator, was tasked with chairing this election critique, and the memo outlines everything that they, that the committee looked at. On the committee, we had Councilmember Donna Crory, Chairman John Kish, myself, Luanne Crook, Councilmember Eddie Ricks, and the first thing we looked at, it outlines what we looked at and then what the committee agreed on. We first looked at the enhancements for the qualifications for candidates, and at this time, we decided that everything was in order the way it is. We have added a recount procedure, and it goes on to describe a mandatory recount, a permissive recount, and it just puts it in the code for us. And then it explains how we would do the recount procedure. Do you want me to go through them section by section, or?
If you could just summarize.
Okay. The mandatory recount would just be that the board would determine whether a recount is necessary, and advise the mayor and city council within 24 hours. It talks about the, a permissive recount, and that has to do with when a recount is This memo includes the changes that the, it has several different drafts that it's been through, so you see all the different changes here. But if a recount was to be requested, it would have to be in writing to the board. The board shall conduct a recount upon the filing of written request of a candidate or citizen of the city who has registered a vote and who voted in said election. The written request for a recount must be made by petition, which, for recounting the requirements of the code. The petition must be filed with the chairman of the board by 5:00 PM on Thursday after the Tuesday election. We are requesting that a deposit also be made with respect to a mayoral and/or a council-at-large race, and a $500 fee for a council Ward 1 or council Ward 2. They need to pay the fee at the time the recount is filed for. The petition should be in writing, including the petitioner's name, address, phone number, reason for requesting the recount, and signed by the petitioner. Only one person can act as a petitioner for each petition. It goes on to provide for the procedures for a recount. Upon determination that a recount is necessary, if the board decides that it's necessary, they would have to announce to all interested persons that they've accepted the petition for recount, name the person requesting the recount, and the board's intention, and the board's intention to conduct the recount of the vote, and specifying the election contest that the subject is requesting, whether it be mayor, council-at-large, Ward 1, or Ward 2. The board would give a notice about when the recount was, would be held, the procedure on the date and time set for the recount. The board shall meet and act as the sole election judges for the purpose of conducting the recount. Recounts will utilize the same process for canvassing as a regular canvassing after the close of the polls. Recount does not require an audit of the operation of the voting machines. The recount shall include a recount of all paper ballots only. Upon completion of the recount, the board shall recertify the results of the election and shall announce the results to all interested parties and the public. They're also recommending that we ban voice amplification devices. This was a bit of an issue during our last election, and the committee agrees that the board has the authority to prevent disruption during Election Day, addressing amplification because it's part of intimidating the voters, we felt. We were asked to look at eliminating the signatures on the petition. We currently require 30 signatures of registered voters. The committee discussed this and didn't feel at this time that they wanted to recommend changing it. They considered the pros and the cons and decided that they, they wanted to keep that as a requirement. They were asked, or it was suggested that they look at extending the term to four years. The committee did not feel that it was at the time to look at that, as well as an increase for pay. They didn't feel it was the time for to look at that. Ethics review changes, having to do with the financial disclosures. The committee's recommending that we add two members of the ethics commission as members of the Board of Election Supervisors. The committee recommends that the procedures for review of the campaign financial disclosures for election candidates be updated and be reviewed by the Board of Elections. The ethics commission would not get involved in the review of the, but they would be part of the Board of Elections. And we are also going to be developing candidate packets similar to what we have now, but it would include a lot more information, similar to a sample that we have from the city of Gaithersburg that the committee really liked. Certificates of nomination, the clerk and/or designee shall receive all election forms from the candidates, and will put in a sealed marked envelope with the name, address, office running for, date and time, and the envelope would be sealed. All forms would then be presented to the Board of Elections -- All forms would then be presented to the Board of Election Supervisors on the first Monday in October at 7:00 PM to certify and set the official election ballot. The campaign contribution dispersment reports, they're currently due, the first report is due 45 days before the election, I'm sorry, the first report is due at the time of filing, the second report would be due 14 days before the election, and the third and final report would be due 30 days after the election.
Thank you, Ms. Rao. What's, I'll ask a question first, and then I'll open it up to counsel. The next step of the committee, this is draft.
This is a draft. We wanted the city council to have an opportunity to look at the recommendations and to offer any changes, amendments that you would like to have the committee consider.
Okay. Excellent. Okay. Councilwoman Crary, we'll start with you with any comments or questions. So, you have nothing to add, then? Councilwoman Nicholas?
What would be the timeframe that we could give our comments back?
Tonight.
Oh, tonight?
We need to, if you're going to change, you need to, that's why we put two members of the council on there to represent the council, to hopefully move it forward.
Okay.
This has still got to be put in legislation, then hearings, then it's probably 45 day, maybe on one or two of them, maybe. There's your charter, disregard.
Okay. Councilman Les?
Let me just ask one question. Everything's pretty straightforward. Under mandatory recount, what are the criteria for that? Because there's nothing here.
What's not in there, the space, though? We'll try to go another section.
No, not permissive, but mandatory. See, you have the 5% rule in there. I'm just wondering, what is, what's the criteria now? See, it says the board shall determine whether mandatory can and necessary.
They need to set that up within their policies, the board.
Okay. I think we just need that perhaps the legislation should say that the board will set the policy...
Right, that's what I'm saying. If you remember, what we were trying to do was to give the Board of Supervisors more authority. They have their own policies, rules, and regulations that doesn't conflict with the law.
I don't want to leave it open so that somebody reads something into it and comes back against us. I'm fine with this, Mr. President.
I think you might tell me differently, but that's what our thought was.
Yeah, I have one question, and I'd have to look at the ethics. I see that you're taking the review of the filings by the candidates out of hand to the ethics commission. Does the ethics ordinance currently require that the ethics commission?
Done, done address it, which has been part of our problem.
All right. So, the ethics, if the ethics ordinance doesn't require that committee to review these financial submissions from the candidates?
Yeah, and one of the recommendations that, that I'm going to come back, I mean, we're going to look at this a little bit, and there probably needs to be, from a legal standpoint, part of my concern is taking two from the ethics commission and making them, then they become part of the election super. I'd rather just create five Board of Election Supervisors, add two more, and they would have, be able to deal with that as well.
I have a little concern, too.
I think flipping back and forth could cause some issues, but part of this is some legal issues that we need to make sure we're squared away with on you all.
Is it the ethics ordinance would require that they review these submissions?
It's quiet, it's silent, which is...
We'd have to get approval from the, you know, because we went through all that to get the darn ethics thing passed, so.
You're right.
Yeah.
Okay, counsel, in the interest of advancing this, these recommendations into their final form, if there are no substantive comments or questions, Councilwoman McCrory, our next step?
I'm cleaning up, take those out of there. Put in Mr. Les, Valerie, if you get something to us this week.
Okay.
We'll throw it in, make it look neater, and then send that out to you guys.
Okay.
Again, just electronically, I would think.
Perfect. Okay.
It'll be on the agenda for first reading next time. You're going to get, be enough time to get the legislation...
We may be able to get a couple of them, but, you know, I'd rather do it as a packet. Probably, I don't know, I don't think, we got to talk to John, and Bob's been out of town, so.
I understand, okay.
Okay. Agenda item four is possible adjournment to close session to obtain legal advice. The legal authority for this closed session is determined in the state government article of the Maryland Code, section 10-508A7.
So moved.